We're just waiting for you. We're ready to go?
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular St. Helena City Council meeting Thursday, September 10th, 2019. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And may we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Present.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Here.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Here.
Vice Chair Doring?
Here.
And Chair Mayor Ellsworth?
Here. So now we'll move to the public forum where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. During public forum, each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by councilmembers for clarifications may be posed, and councilmembers may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Paul Asmath. I live at 141 Noel Circle in St. Helena, and I came today to give you a brief update about a project that we've been working on since 2011, and it's a small little redwood forest out in, located in the city's wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, please. And that is, in 2011, we tried an experimental forest, and we planted seedlings and using the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant to grow a forest to see if we would be successful doing so. And, next slide, please. So you can see what the trees looked like when they were about one year old in 2013 and now what they look like in 2019. So we feel like we've been, it's been a very successful project that we've shown we can use the water effectively to grow a forest and, and create a great carbon sequestration sink, as well as habitat and potentially a future timber harvest down the road. Next slide, please. When you're, I know that the council has before them coming up a lot of new opportunities at the wastewater treatment plant, and you're looking at many things you can do in that area. In 2013, the city staff prepared a staff report for the council that proposed actually 50 acres of the, of the 100 acres being used for a redwood forest. The, it might have been a little bit aggressive, and so, over time, we've thought, well, it's still a really good idea, and especially where we showed this new forest zone, we feel it's a, really would be a, a great buffer for the spray fields between the, the spray fields and the vineyards to the southern border. And so, when you're considering in the future what's gonna take place out there, I hope that you'll consider an expansion of this, of the forest, and love to take any of you out there that, that haven't seen it and show you how it's being managed and, and what it looks like, because it's, it's really quite impressive. The trees are about 25 to 30 feet tall, the ones that were planted in, in 2011, 2012. So it really does, I think, have a lot of future benefits to the city, both in the carbon sequestration. I don't know, probably many of you read the article in the Napa Register recently about the, the city of Napa and what are they doing on climate action plan, and there were some people who were complaining they're not doing enough. And I, I feel like this is a very proactive way of actually physically planting trees. And many, many of you may have read that the best way to, to combat carbon and greenhouse gases in our environment is through planting trees. It's a, if we could plant a trillion trees, then we wouldn't have a problem. So, this, this could be a start, so thank you for considering it.
Thank you. I've, I've been out there to visit that. It's a pretty incredible concept, so thanks for bringing it back up. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will move now to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. I will turn first to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met previously in closed session, and no reportable actions were taken. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Our city manager?
No report tonight.
Our city finance director?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to give the council and the public a brief update on the direction from city council a few meetings ago to move forward with the bi-monthly billing transition for the utility billing. So I've been working with the city manager, and we're also going to be working with the assistant to city manager to work on a, a pretty comprehensive public outreach, just to make sure everyone knows what is happening. The timeline, right now, we are, we are hoping to provide notice via individual mailers to all, all, anyone who has a utility account with us by the end of this month. In addition to that, we'll be including separate mailers in the utility billings. We'll be posting things on the website. At the next council meeting, we are hoping to bring the first reading of the ordinance for the change to bi-monthly billing. In addition, we're going to be personally contacting anyone who is currently receiving our cares discount rates, and we'll also be working on updating that policy. So I just wanted to give everyone as much advance notice. We'll be talking about it a lot, because we want to make sure that we get all questions answered.
Thank you. Anything from our city clerk?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Do we have some department heads in the back with anything to report? Ms. Criden from the library?
I just wanted to report that we served 717 meals with the breakfast at the library program this summer, so we're hoping to do that again next year. That program was in partnership with the St. Helena Unified School District and the USDA Summer Food Service Program. And then also currently, we have 69 children who have reached the goal of reading 100 books this summer. They have until the end of the month to do that, so I'm assuming we'll have a few more on that list. We usually do. There were 435 participants in it. And this Thursday at 7:00 PM outside in the back, in the parking lot, we'll have Mariachi Jalisco performing, so it'd be nice night to come out.
Thank you. That's wonderful about the, the 100 Books Club.
Yeah, and the meals, too. That was, first time my outreach services librarian bent over backwards to work with the school district to bring the meals to the library, so we're really happy that we showed there was a need, so thank you.
Thank you. Our planning director?
I have nothing to report this evening.
And then we have our Parks and Recreation.
So Bachi Ball is wrapping up. Tonight is the final night of fall, or of summer play. There were 116, altogether was a 1,600 players making Bachi our biggest program in Parks and Recreation for the city of St. Helena. Youth Soccer's underway. It's bigger and, and we have more teams and divisions than we had last year, so that program continues to grow. Our biggest challenge is getting parents to realize that they do need to sign up early because there's a lot of work to do over the summer and getting ready for the season, so we're hoping that we'll be able to figure out a way to, to ensure that parents get signed up before June rolls around, because we're still receiving requests for kids to get, get into soccer, and we're just, we're at capacity for that. We're, we're making plans still for Hometown Harvest Festival on October 19th. We'll again put things out on the 17th for the Hometown Harvest Festival Thanks and Gratitude Potluck, so that's where we invite the community to come out, something that council started and that we've kind of maintained the, last year and hopefully this year. So, looking for people to come out and be a part of that big community event. And then Stephanie is working hard getting ready for Jingle All the Way, and Amali and I will be putting together Home for the Holidays. We have some exciting things coming up.
What date is the Potluck again?
Potluck is on Thursday, October 17th, in Lyman Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we went to planning, we'll go to Public Works.
I just want to report that the citywide paving project started last week, and you'll notice a lot of curb ramps being disturbed around the city. And that's the first portion of work, is the sidewalk repairs and mostly the curb ramp upgrades, and then they'll be commencing the paving at the end of this month, early October. In addition, the Hunt Avenue Gap Closure Project will commence next week. They were going to start this week, but since there was crews starting on the other contractor job in the near vicinity, they wanted to kind of give a little break in between truckloads on Hunt Avenue, so that's all.
Very good. Councilperson Chuteau?
I do have something. I've written a letter that I'm asking Representative Mike Thompson to sign on as a sponsor of HR 1296 to ban the sale of automatic weapons, like the AR-15. I've sent this letter to other elected officials in Napa County, all the city councils and the board of supervisors, and I would like to be able to send it to all of you to see if you would like to sign it, but because of the Brown Act, I can't just email you. So I wanted to bring it up here to see if there's interest on putting it on the agenda so we can discuss it.
Certainly, I would support that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Doring?
I don't have anything, I don't know if you have anything on transportation that you're going to talk about at all.
Do you, okay.
We have a summit coming up.
Right. So that's next, next week, the NVTA Transportation Summit, Mr. Doring and I will both attend, and we'll report back from that.
I'm going to go as well as the alternate, just to learn more about it.
Excellent. Ms. Coburnstein? Ms. Knudsen?
I wanted to report sort of two things. One is, the, there was some interaction that I had with Public Works and the city manager regarding the fact that our stoplights and the timing about our stoplights are not actually controlled by the city. Apparently, they're called, controlled by Caltrans, and there has been a change recently to the Adams Street timing, and I'd like to agendize for future discussion, some cities can take control of their own stoplights from Caltrans, and I think that's something that we should consider so that we actually control traffic that rolls through our lovely town.
I assume that our city manager probably would want a little bit more detail on what it is that you would have us discuss at, at a meeting? Maybe we can, who would, who would be, who, what staff member would be in charge of sort of helping us with that?
I think it would be to understand what the process is with Caltrans to potentially take control of the light timing, and examples of cities that are our size that have done it, and those that don't do it. I was surprised to learn that it was not actually our purview, that we aren't, not in charge of 29, and I think particularly as we're talking about additional sidewalks, we're trying to think about how to do bikes between west side and east side, and, you know, sort of having control of our stoplights, there's four in town, it seems to be, would be part of that, and I'd love to at least have that conversation.
I'm in, in favor of having that discussion. Is this something that could be bundled in with other discussions with Caltrans about, you know, we know the street escape's coming up, and somehow tying in, as you're saying, we're going to be making decisions, so?
Well, I just think it could be agendized as a, both informational and to determine if that was something that the city was interested in, what would be the process, because I don't know what the process is.
I think it's best to have it as a separate discussion and isolate it. And, and we did some inquiries in terms of that signal, and there's records if Caltrans adjusts lights. Did we hear back?
We did hear back. The, the Caltrans, Calstoker Division of Maintenance said nothing had been replaced, but they were checking again with the, the Oakland Office for signalization. They still have not heard back that they're not aware of any changes being made at the intersection of Adams and Main Street, but they were searching again since this continues to be a concern of, of Councilmember Knudsen.
I'm just responding to citizens who've basically flagged it like, how come that was changed? I was like, well, I'll investigate, so this is, this is part of the investigation.
So that's something we can bring back as a, as an isolated item? Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. I've got three items. I'll try to move quickly, so please bear with me. First of all, I hope everyone will come out for a Mexican Independence Day celebration this Sunday, September 15th at 2:00 PM at beautiful Lyman Park in beautiful downtown St. Helena. This cultural event will include food and music and dance, and a representative from the Mexican consulate from San Francisco will be joining us for a flag exchange ceremony and a flag raising of the Mexican flag on our ceremonial flagpole. That's 2:00 PM this Sunday, September 15th at Lyman Park, and this times perfectly with a proclamation we'll be doing in a few minutes for Latino Heritage Month. My second item is about traffic speeds. I'm starting up something again called Club 25, and all you have to do to be part of the club is to keep your driving speed at 25 miles per hour, or the lesser speed limit around town. While the city looks for other traffic calming measures, we can all be part of the solution by choosing to slow down and drive the speed limit and making it a cultural thing around here that's the cool thing to do. Recently, and sadly, some loved family pets have been hit by cars, and this can also happen to pedestrians. If we all see the value of having a town where it is safe for kids to ride bikes and for pedestrians to walk and for people to have pets, we should all see the value of slowing down to keep things safe for everybody. So that's Club 25. It's easy to join. You just drive 25 miles around town or the lesser speed limit. Club 25. And, and finally, fireworks. On, over, over Labor Day weekend, we had an incident with a large-scale late-night illegal fireworks discharge on a dry summer night. While disruptive to many residents and their animals, this incident also created a fire risk for the community, and that's why these types of fireworks discharges are illegal. I guess the person's responsible didn't get the memo that we are not doing that type of thing here anymore, because it puts our entire community at risk. Our lives, the lives of our loved ones, our property and, and our property investments. If you think about the fires of 2017, the dreams of our community can be turned into a nightmare with just one spark. Let's never forget the fear as three sides of our town were burning, the numerous deaths in the region, the property damage, the damaged lungs from toxic smoke, the aftermath of piecing our community back together. It doesn't seem worth the risk for any of us to be lighting off some illegal fireworks just for some fun times. Since this incident occurred just outside the St. Helena jurisdiction, I brought this matter to the attention of numerous county supervisors and the county CEO who's looking into the matter. I also brought this to the attention of roughly 20 law enforcement, fire, and emergency professionals from around the county gathered for a joint preparedness meeting yesterday. As far as I'm concerned, the conversation is not about what to do the next time this happens, but making sure it's understood that what happened over Labor Day weekend with the fireworks needs to be the last time it happens, so I will be following through on this issue. So, thank you. And with that, we will move to our presentations and public recognitions, and we have one proclamation recognizing Napa County Latino Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, and I will stand at the podium to read this. This is the City of St. Helena Proclamation Recognizing Napa County Latino Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2019. Whereas, in 1968, President Lyndon B. Johnson first recognized Hispanic Heritage Week, later expanded by President Reagan to one month, and each successive United States President has continued this tradition of declaring September 15th through October 15th to be National Hispanic Heritage Month, and who is called upon the people of our country to observe this month with appropriate respect, ceremonies, and activities. And whereas Napa County and the city of St. Helena have a long history of welcoming immigrants and are home to a growing multi-ethnic and multicultural Latino population, including citizens originating, originating from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, all of whom are welcome and very much appreciated. And whereas, in 2014, the Latino population became the largest ethnic group in California, in Napa County and the city of St. Helena, the Latino population grew by 50% in the past 10 years. And whereas, the diverse Latino population of the city of St. Helena and Napa County make a significant economic contribution and has, have other profound positive influences on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, culture, and service, and whereas, the city of St. Helena and Napa County, which thrives on the diversity and ingenuity of all our people, also depends on the continued support and success of our diverse Latino population. We will continue to be enriched by the trans-cultural contributions of our Latino friends and neighbors for many decades to come, and we will continue to make efforts to create an inclusive environment where we can all thrive. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeff Ellsworth, Mayor of the city of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2019, as Napa County Latino Heritage Month in the city of St. Helena. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of St. Helena to be affixed this 10th day of September, 2019. Okay, we'll move now to our consent items. I'm, I am understanding that 8.6 will not be heard tonight, but I will move through the numbers, 8.1, and if somebody wants to pull one of these, they may. 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, we've taken 8.6 off, and 8.7. With that, is there a motion to pass those?
I move to pass the consent items.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. We'll move to public hearings, 9.1. This is consideration of proposed approval of a resolution establishing a home generator permit fee in the amount of $582.50 with the effective date of April 1st, 2019, and authorized refunds in the amount of $146.50 for any home generator permits issued since April 1, 2019. And this is...
I'm going to recuse myself and step out of the hall.
And this is, Mr. Presswich?
Thank you, Mayor. So the proposal tonight is implementing the policy discussion that you had at your last meeting to provide a modest support for the home generator fees that were essentially commingled with other types of fees, so what we've done is brought forward a specific home generator permit fee for you in the amount of $582.50, and that would have an effective date of April 1st.
Are there any initial public, council comments, thoughts?
I have some, actually. I, I'm just wondering if we, given the two public letters that Jerry Hyde, the acoustical engineer, sent to council, I'm wondering if we need to have a wider discussion about what our actual policy for putting these mechanical pieces of equipment in residential neighborhoods are. And my specific concerns are that we essentially have no policy regarding these pieces, and I wonder if we should follow the example of Santa Monica to actually have requirements around noise, setback, non-side yard, sort of testing regarding when certain decibels can be done. And I'm all for encouraging people to take control of their own electrical needs. I'm a big fan of solar and batteries and generators, I think are fantastic. I wonder if we need to be having a wider discussion to provide context to changing a fee structure. I will also say that, to me, these are very expensive units, and it seemed to me that the initial fee was appropriate, given how expensive these units are.
I, I tend to agree and wanted to know, after reading these, the public comment letters, what would be the process for that wider discussion? Would that be?
I think you could separate the issue, if you would like, so address this issue tonight, but also agenda as a future conversation about how other cities are approaching noise issues and citing issues of generators, et cetera. And so, at this point, I haven't received any complaints, but I imagine there aren't a lot of them out there today, and that down the road, we could anticipate additional concern about noise and placement of these generators.
I know that we've got a busy schedule coming up. I guess, I guess my concern would be that if we're starting to get more folks coming in and we don't have a policy, and we haven't discussed it, that we have, you know, some vulnerability, is it, is it something that could be agendized fairly soon?
I think so. I think this is a fairly straightforward issue that we could find a couple of samples, bring forward some concepts, and then seek feedback from the council on.
I'm going to open it for public comment, if there's any comment at this point. Seeing none, I'll, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council.
Can I have an additional?
Yes.
Just before we close the discussion on this, is that I did read the Santa Monica regulations. It's two pages, it's incredibly straightforward, but it does require noise standards, testing, and potential screening for neighbors, and I think that that's, this could be a model for, clearly, they've done some work. This could be a model for, for what we might, what we might like to do, and it would give additional direction to staff to, in terms of what this might do to minimize impacts to neighbors.
So as Mr. Presswich said, bringing back a couple of models and we go from there. So with that issue of the broader conversation, and we'll bring it back to the, the reduction of the fees, do we have any, any thoughts on that? Is there comfort with that?
I still like the same thing from before. I still liked this reduction of fees when we're comparing it to the other ones. It still seems like I want more people to go and get a permit for it.
Okay. Mr. Doring?
I think we can do a two-step process, and I would, I would just add this for the record. I, I had some interaction with Mr. Hyde in response to his letters, and what I learned was, yes, the, the issues are legitimate, however, they were couched in very hypothetical terms. He was not complaining personally and has no personal evidence of any noise issues in the city of St. Helena. He was asked to opine based on standards that he knows about it because of his background as an acoustical engineer, and to this date, I'm not aware of any complaints in the city of St. Helena with respect to noise issues. The reason I brought this forward was I wanted to make sure that folks were not prohibited from actually getting the oversight and, and going through the permit process rather than having these generators dropped off on their driveway, which I know is happening in other communities. Folks are just bootlegging these things, and it is, it's, it's, I'm more concerned about that, but of course, I'm concerned about the noise issue. I think it will turn out that the noise issue is not as big of an issue as we may have been led to believe, but I, I would like to have that conversation for, for sure. So I'm, I'm okay with the, if we do more oversight, we may need to raise the fee back up, but at this point, under, the, the comparison that we, we have with respect to these fees, it seems fair and reasonable compared to other jurisdictions. And I would just bring the council's attention back to our building code conversation that we had in terms of, maybe we don't have a formal policy, but we certainly have an informal policy, and there's a lot of oversight and a lot of direction in terms of when the testing is done, and, and there was a fairly robust discussion on that. I felt fairly comfortable that it, it's not just, you know, sky's the limit, you can do whatever you want. There is a certain amount of oversight, and we still have codes, like electrical code that we're, mechanical codes that the city is signed onto. We're obligated to follow those state codes, so... So, anyway, I'm just adding a little bit more flavor to the conversation. So I'm, I would move to accept the recommended action.
Do we have a second?
I would second.
So a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Yes.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Sure.
And Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. So we will move to our next item, which is, oh, thanks, David. This is item 10.1. This is discussion and possible direction on the reopening of Pratt Avenue post-construction of the County of Napa Silverado Trail Slide Repair Project. And this is Erica Smithy, who's our Public Works Director.
Yes, I think everyone's very familiar with the slide repairs that have taken, are currently taking place on Silverado Trail at Pratt Avenue. That construction is still taking place and will be completed at the end of October. But in the meantime, in the past two years, there's been discussion about the reopening of Pratt Avenue and Silverado Trail. And if it were to reopen, what can we do about making improvements at that intersection to reduce either traffic and/or accident congestion at Silverado Trail? During, right after the fires, we actually prompted the fire chief, police chief, and myself to meet and discuss issues of this, because just in light of that one disaster alone, the essence of having additional evacuation routes available anywhere in our city or in the county limits for that matter are very important. And we already discussed how we need another extension through our city to Silverado Trail. So eliminating even one extension or connection to Silverado Trail and reducing the ability for us to, traffic circulation in our city is not a great idea. And temporary or providing timing closures or closures only during evacuation has its own set of issues or problematic. So discussing with our interim police chief, as well as the Public Works Director of the County of Napa, many are not aware that the actual connection, intersection at Silverado Trail is governed by the County of Napa and not the city. Therefore, we've been discussing how could we make improvements once this reopen, and that biggest alternative idea is eliminating the left turn movements from Silverado Trail and the left turn movements from Silverado Trail onto Pratt Avenue. Due to the narrowness of Silverado Trail, despite the new wall going in on the slide repair, we're still too narrow to put a left turn pocket in there. And it's abruptly to the next intersection, there's been blind, there's been a lot of accidents. I haven't done the actual accident history, but we had a public comment letter come in the other day from a concerned resident that brought up accident issues from left turn movements. I know they are prevalent on Pope Street at Silverado Trail as well, even though we do have left turn movements and left turn lanes on Silverado Trail. But in order to move this forward with the county and trying to limit that, they have to go to their Board of Supervisors to add the additional regulatory signage. Therefore, they would, they requested our, the Director of Public Works has requested our support, the city council's support on this issue. They have the Public Works Director's support in our town, but they need our city council to weigh in on the issue. And as far as the city's jurisdiction, we've already had program for at least three years, the left turn, the radar feedback signs that let people know their speed as they're traveling east or westbound on Pratt Avenue. In addition to the speed signs, we've been talking about reducing the lane width, trying to add a calming measure by narrowing the street lanes, and, which is fairly inexpensive adding striping. So those are recommendations tonight, is to do what we have budgeted now, provide feedback and direction to the Public Works Director, myself, on whether we provide a letter of support to the county to change that, limit the left turn movements on Silverado Trail and Pratt Avenue. And we'd provide the advanced warning language signage on Pratt Avenue going eastbound to alert traffic that they will not be able to take a left turn onto Silverado Trail. And we probably should do some message boards as well in advance internally.
And the county would handle it on the Silverado Trail side, the signage?
Correct.
Are there any additional, or initial council comments, thoughts?
I'm curious whether you have heard from folks who live on Pratt who would be in favor of restricting their turning movements from Silverado or onto Silverado. Have they, have you had any positive feedback? I assume that they're willing to put up with their own restriction, as long as they have more calming measures. In other words, I'm seeing two different issues. I'm seeing a speeding issue, and I'm seeing the public safety issue from Silverado Trail. What are folks saying about the left turn restriction?
We received one public comment letter from someone in the Cornell subdivision, and they were in favor of the no left turn movements. I have not heard anyone from, we did receive one concern from Pratt. I believe it was more pertaining to the Main Street and Pratt Avenue, which we'll be discussing in a future meeting.
Ms. Almond Smithy, is it, you know, that right turn is really awkward as well. Has there been discussions with the county to have traffic calming from Silverado heading south? Because it's such a blind corner, and I just know in the past, you know, trying to take a right turn there, even if it is only a right turn, it's still a frightening turn. And, you know, the way the county's going to situate the roadway, I mean, is there a way to make that such, not such a, I don't know, 270 degree, or, you know, 290 degree turn, so that it's a little, that there's some space to pull out and maybe a way to slow cars coming down, maybe a flashing yellow or something?
I mean, it's possible that we could request that signage. We have similar signage on Pope Street, that there's a turn ahead, so, or intersection ahead, so it's possible that we could request that they add the additional cautionary signage heading in the southbound direction on Silverado Trail.
I mean, I think it'd be a really good idea. It's a frightening, frightening location. And then, am I correct to just, sorry, just to clarify, so the county has agreed to also not have a left turn from Silverado heading north to Pratt?
Preliminary, just the Public Works Director discussion with Steve Letter and myself, he was on board with it, but he has to get approval from County Board of Supervisors to do so.
Do we need, as a council, to support your informal discussion so that the county knows that the city, if that's our belief, I believe it is, that's our belief, that eliminating a left turn from Silverado is the smart thing to do?
That is our request tonight, is direction from city council.
So direction is actually endorsement. All right.
I'm going to, and this is any more comment, I'm going to open it for public comment. Please, come up to the podium.
Mr. Stein, you had PowerPoint, because I'm pretty good at doing that. I've gone old school on this one, but hopefully you'll be able to see it. My name is Ross Allen. I live on 643 Pratt Speedway in St. Helena, and I use that term unadvisedly, the hours at any time of the day or night, there's 35 to 70 mile an hour traffic on Pratt Avenue. I've talked to you, Mayor, about it. I talked to the previous mayor. I had the previous mayor sit on my front porch and watch cars go back and forth at 70 miles an hour, and tell me that there's only three or two police cruisers in town. And even if he wanted to support the speed limit, there's no way of doing that. But the real issue I want to talk about here is the intersection with Pratt and Main. And I also want to answer your question about the left turn. For two years, we've had three signs that say Pratt Avenue is closed at the bridge, and yet we have a continuous flow of traffic up and down Pratt Avenue that go all the way to the bridge, turn around, and come speeding back because they couldn't get through. If you think that you're going to put a no-left-turn sign on Pratt Avenue, and someone is going to drive all the way from Main Street to the bridge and sit there and say, "I'm going to take my chances..."
Sir, could you direct your comments this way to the council? Here?
Yeah, I'm just talking to anyone who happens to be listening. But, you know, it's going to be completely ineffective. People will make that left turn there as long as there's no police presence. So anyway, I'm going to talk about the intersection. And this is something that I wrote a letter to The Star and to Mayor Ellsworth, and to our county supervisor about.
Mr. Allen, will you please speak into the mic for the record?
How am I going to do this? Can I pull this up? You know, I'm not sound. Okay, we need to have this right here. Okay, the first issue, sitting on Pratt Avenue, trying to make a left turn, you have five seconds between a car appearing out of the tree tunnel and being in the intersection. Southbound, as long as no one is parked in the red zone, you have six to eight seconds. So this is an issue, and there's two, about two seconds between cars coming out of the tree tunnel, and I've observed this for years. So we have very poor visibility there. In fact, I'd say deadly, because the only traffic control here is a stop sign at Pratt and Main. And so what do we have going on at that intersection? I'll show you. We have northbound traffic, southbound traffic. This is 35, this is 25 to 35, depending. We have right turn lanes, one, two, three, and four. And the most death-defying turn of all are the left turn lanes here that are facilitated by two left turn lanes from Main into the hotel and from Main onto Pratt.
Sir, we're discussing the Pratt-Silverado Trail. Is this connection, I mean, is there, does this connect?
There's a direct connection, because I'm, my point is that this intersection is literally so bad that when you increase the traffic on Pratt from Silverado Trail, you're going to put more people at risk for having accidents in this intersection. And so the point that I wanted to make, and that I thought was my opportunity to talk about today, is the fact that I would really like to see an on-demand stoplight here to control the uncontrolled traffic. Right now, the only control is a single stop sign, and literally, with all of this going on in this intersection, there's no intersection like this anywhere else in town. You literally take your life in your hands when you try to make a left turn. And what I would like to see is an on-demand sign, so that when someone is at Pratt Avenue and maybe at the hotel, it puts a stop on north-south Main Street traffic.
Okay.
So that's my pitch.
Very good. And with this letter, you've outlined this?
Yeah, and that was published in The Star.
Okay.
And so I think that, you know, part of the responsibility of opening Pratt is to deal with what happens when Pratt meets Main.
Okay.
If you don't solve this problem, you haven't solved the problem of safety on Pratt Avenue.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for presenting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Any other thoughts? I'll...
See, I feel like I'm missing pieces, but maybe I'm not, or maybe I am. So are we also anticipating traffic calming on Pratt itself? And are those measures, have we communicated with the neighborhood about what those measures would be in terms of speed bumps or signage, or, you know, what is our intention to keep the racetrack aspect of Pratt to a minimum?
The feedbacks, the speed feedback signs predate my tenure here, but I know that they were, because I believe feedback from the neighborhood at that time, that they were added to the budget, operations budget in 2017, 1617. But as far, I've not heard any other feedback. I believe Mr. Allen was, has been the most vocal on this issue in the last couple of years.
Should we put in speed bumps? I mean, what's the opinion of the Public Works Department?
Traffic calming measures in the traffic lanes are commonly used, but unfortunately, our fire code prevents that discretion without the code ordinance being updated. It was written out of the 2017 update to the fire code.
Can I ask, so if we're putting the radar signs in, people come off the bridge, and my understanding from the folks who live in the neighborhood is that the 35 mile an hour speed limit, which is often exceeded as well, people come around the turn, and it's sort of a blind turn. The people who live there can't get across the road to get their mail or to walk. There's concern for people, pets, et cetera. I think the idea of the traffic calming is excellent. And my understanding with traffic speed bumps for the fire engines is that it rattles the interior, the inside mechanisms of the fire trucks, which is why they're not preferred by the fire department. My thinking is that to begin with, as much, you know, sort of signage, the radar signs, the traffic calming lanes, but I think as Mr. Knudsen is asking, once they come around that turn and they start coming down Pratt towards the town, will the traffic calming continue as they head closer to Main Street?
The idea is to put, I just saw a preliminary approach to the signs today. The idea would be to have the signs about just before the CIA dormitory going the westbound, because it'll capture them as they come around that corner, they'll immediately know, hey, I'm going way too fast. I don't know if everyone's been on South Crane lately. That sign catches you as soon as you turn onto Sulphur Springs, and if you're speeding, you're like, oops, it catches you pretty far down the way. The same would be going on the eastbound approach. I believe it's right after the railroad tracks, that's already a calming measure there. People want to slow down before they go over. So then it'll be just after the fire, the railroad tracks, but it'll capture them when they turn onto Pratt Avenue from Main Street.
Is there some thought of what happens when they come off the bridge, right out by the trail? They're coming off the bridge, heading towards town, and they're accelerating around that corner, that's where there's a real concern for the people in the area. That turn is where the, they're accelerating into the turn, coming into town.
Does our code preclude rumble strips? I mean, it's not a, rumble strips as well.
Yes.
What's the classification of Pratt Avenue?
Collector.
I mean, it would seem a little odd to me to put rumble strips and those kind of traffic calming devices on a collector street, but maybe something as simple as a sign as you're going, approaching that corner, you know, caution pedestrians crossing ahead or something like that to get people to slow down, in addition to the other things that you mentioned. I don't think speed bumps on Pratt are appropriate, myself.
And could the speed limit be reduced? Or is that a whole nother animal?
We will be bringing a speed survey, or the updated speed traffic limit signs ordinance to the council, and probably, hopefully, at the 24th, if not the first meeting in October. But you do have to make a determination based on the 85th percentile of speeds being used on that road, and it very well could go up if you do a speed. We haven't been able to do a speed survey on Pratt because it's road closed, and you need a certain amount of vehicle traffic during a certain hour to establish the speed for that street.
And aren't those signs that you're putting in also collecting data on the speed, so we'll have that?
Yes, we will.
In the future.
And then, an additional question, given the public comment about people actually then turning at the trail, do we anticipate signage at the very beginning of Pratt or even on Main Street that says, you know, Pratt is not, you can't turn left, so don't think that you're going to get to Angwin by taking Pratt? I mean, I don't know what the proper signage would be, but is there signage that could be on Main Street or on Pratt as well?
I could foresee it being an enforcement issue, definitely. And also, I don't know how we, we can't stop Google or map directions from providing bad information. That's another issue. When even when a road's closed, they still get that information out.
Well, we can actually alert them.
Correct.
I just wonder if there's some, something that could be done.
I'm just, I'm in favor of not doing the left turns because of safety and making that recommendation.
So one other question, we have some, on Pope Street, some restrictions in terms of size and weight of vehicles. Is that something that can be considered for Pratt?
I asked that very specific question, and the county said no.
They weren't interested in discussing that?
And maybe we push that issue, and maybe that's the direction you provide.
Is there any thought on that? Larger trucks, longer vehicles, as we know on Pope, heavier vehicles, there's a restriction on Pope, is there any?
Is that because of the bridge on Pope? Right, that's the reason.
That's a tight bridge on Pratt. I mean, that's not a, that bridge is not a, you would never build a bridge to... I mean, that's not a, that bridge is not a, you would never build that bridge today.
I, I think we should ask for an official determination from the county.
So is there consensus to push a little bit and ask on that? If there's some?
I agree. I mean, I concur with Anna that you should move forward with the no-left-turn issue with the county. And you might as well ask them. I don't know what the structure of that bridge is compared to the Pope Bridge or anything. So I'll leave it to the engineers to figure it out.
So if we, if we start with the, the traffic calming measures that we're discussing, we start with the no-left turns, we ask about restrictions similar to Pope, then maybe we get a picture of what traffic is like once it opens. And then from there, we may have to come up with some new thoughts.
And I think we should think about, longer term, whether the Pratt deserves an on-demand light. And I know that it's a bigger discussion than us because it's Caltrans, but, you know.
Yeah, I, I would support agendizing it at some point in the future. We had a lot of discussions about it in terms of just a crossing signal for pedestrians at one point. And I don't quite recall where we were, but I think it would be worth talking about again when you can bring it back to us.
Part of that delay was with the discussion that'll be coming back to council as the Pratt realignment that ties together.
I would support that too, looking into some sort of lighting, light there. Mr. Doring, do you have any thoughts?
I, I agree with everything that's been said, especially Mr. Allen's comments about Pratt and Main. I experience that every day, making my left turn, you know, onto Calstoga. I guess I want to throw this out for discussion or at least thought. You know, we really don't have a lot of great left-hand turns off of Silverado Trail coming into our city. And I'm just wondering, by eliminating the Pratt left turn, and there are some safety issues there because I've made turns there and you have people bearing down on you, you're, you're sort of spreading the burden to Pope. And I'm kind of wondering, are we creating more of a hazard, even though Pope does have a left turn lane? Are we creating more of a hazard by having many more cars come onto Pope Street? And I, I've had situations where that's been backed up. And you're make, you're right in the middle of your turn and people are stopped, and you are on the highway and not able to actually get onto the bridge. And I've had that happen at least five times in the last couple of years. It's very unnerving. So there's an issue, no question about it, a left-hand turn on Pratt. But I'm just wondering what the unintended consequences are. And my thought is, are there measures that are short of the left-hand turn? Like really strong signage and yellow lights and flashing, traffic slowing down, you know, right before that curve to the left-hand turn on Pratt, that we should at least try first to see whether that would help a little bit? Then people are able to make the left-hand turn, basically at their own risk, I guess. But you're sort of spreading that burden of traffic throughout the community. And I guess that's what I'm concerned about. You know, what to stop someone at Pope saying, hey, we're getting tired of all this traffic coming down on Pope off the bridge, and then we're starting to run out of left-hand turns. And they would have a right to do that, right? The issues are a little different, I understand that. But I'm just drawing the, you know, the bigger picture unintended consequences, concern that I have. And I would be more comfortable at least trying some other calming measures to see, and give that six months to see how that would work out. And aggressive, you know, blinking lights and those kinds of things, especially around that blind curve as you turn onto Pratt. That's, that's my thought. But I, if the council wants to go more aggressively with eliminating the left-hand turn, you know, that's fine. I just, I just think there's something else to be looked at.
My thought as an opening step would be to see how it goes with eliminating the left-hand turns and see, you know, a test period with that feeling.
And I would say we've had a test period, and I don't know what has happened. I don't, there's no data. I mean, we've, how long's it been closed?
Two.
So.
Two and a half years.
But the, but then the reopening of it gives sort of half access. So that may take some of the pressure off Pope. People can still take right turns and traffic can still flow off of Pope that way. I mean, off of Pratt that way. I do see your point, though, of spreading the burden. But I, I feel like since it's been closed so long, trying it with no lefts, maybe a half step towards seeing what it looks like.
I think, Ms. Vice Mayor Doring, I think the challenge with Pratt is if it was a clean, you know, it's not clean on Silverado Trail side, and it's not clean on the, the bridge is hard against Silverado Trail as well. The problem with that intersection is it just can't really handle sort of full service. Like, if the county had a wide enough road, maybe, yeah. But there's no chance for a left turn lane. So you have to have people backed up behind you, and they come roaring around the turn, yikes, yikes, yikes. It's, I just wonder.
I think we have to recognize that the county's going to be the one who's going to make the decision. And I would say we just ask them to look at multiple alternatives. I, I would think you would go up to Deer Park where you can turn, where there's a signalized intersection. And so maybe the restriction will work. And like you said, if word gets around that that's what you have to do, you know, it's only, you can make almost the same movement. So I, I would support you, you know, going, writing a letter to the county, encouraging them, but also open the door, I think, to asking the question that Paul's asking. I'm, I'm sure they would. They're going to be the final arbiters here anyway, aren't they?
I have a feeling they'll immediately ask, will you, will we help sponsor those lights? And we're probably looking at about 5,000 max per light, southbound and northbound. If that'd be of interest, just, just in advance of their, of requesting this direction.
Is this something that Measure T can participate in terms of funding?
Most likely, if it's identified on their five-year plan list.
I mean, I would be in support of, of helping if it provides more safety.
Okay.
I mean.
I can get on my soapbox. We're county residents. We pay for the county. The county can give us a couple of lights. I mean, really? That's it for me being on my soapbox.
Do you feel like you have direction?
I do, thank you.
Okay, very good. So we'll move on. Thank you. Thank you for coming. And we're going to move on now to item 10.2. And this is consideration and proposed adoption of a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Grindline Skate Parks Incorporated for the C-20-03 Skate Park Improvements project for an amount not to exceed $124,420 and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And this also is our Public Works Director.
Thank you very much. As you recall, this was added as a CIP project in May to do the skate park improvements in advance of the 10-year anniversary of the skate park opening. And we paid $2,000 to Grindline Skate Parks to come out to do an assessment. They were the original developers of the skate park and contractors for it. And they provided us a very thorough, detailed assessment on the maintenance. And overall, they said our condition of our skate park is in very good condition, except for it needed some treatments such as the epoxy filling, a lot of the cracks out there, sealing, the coping around the, some of the bowls, and just maintaining the surface and resealing it. And there were some, a couple of requests from, from the city side as far as adding a little more treatments on the exterior. They, we also talked about adding, adding, filling in the, the grass or green areas. But we took it to the Parks and Rec Commission, and they have provided their feedback on the, on the issue and said, let's move forward with all the maintenance. Let's not fill in the void areas. Let's go back and revisit the vegetation landscape plan that was provided in 2008 or '09 and, and work on that either internally or through a contract. Move forward with the maintenance as outlined by Grindline and adding a couple, few more additions. And as well, staff has recommended that we keep them on to come down to an annual inspection for the next three years and have a contingency of $30,000 to their contract to apply any changes they encounter in the field this year that weren't addressed in their original assessment, as well as the next three years, starting next fall, a year after they complete this, this, this work, to address any treatments that need be done or maintenance efforts in the following three years. And then we revisit it whether we keep them on board at PSA in the future or we handle things from there on out. But they provide a really good summary on their assessment and things that we can take care of internally. And I think in the next three years, we could also look at what we can do and, and from our, our park staff as well for the maintenance, ongoing maintenance. They, they discovered that over the course of 10 years of developing all these parks, that they didn't have an O and M manual. And so now they're doing this part of the, the field house to maintain these parts, these beautiful skate parks that they developed. And with that, I leave it to City Council.
Okay. Do we have any initial comments or questions, thoughts?
So I see that the Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee is here, and I hope he'll speak in the public comment. But I have to say, that was a fantastic meeting, and I want to compliment Public Works and the Recreation Department for soliciting and participating in what I thought was a fascinating discussion. We had almost, I don't know, 10 or 11 members of the public, some skaters, some people who were part of the development of the park originally. And, and the Grindline proposal and the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee, I think is well-considered, and I'm super excited about it. What's missing here still is the repair of the fence and the new entry into the fence and to essentially re-implement the landscape plan and fix the, or maintain, re-inspect and remaintain the irrigation. I presume that's going to be, either come back to us or will be part of some further. Because that was also the assessment of the Parks and Rec Committee.
Right, they did. So the other treatments of the park were the fencing, landscape, and the ADA features. ADA in the park entrance have already been identified in the ADA transition plan and can be prioritized. We believe we could probably replace the pavers as we do on our downtown Main Street internally and address some of the, the water fountain that needs to be replaced. That was also through ADA, the ADA funds, ADA funds that the council has programmed in our CIP project. Within this couple of work, we originally, the council appropriated $250,000 towards the CIP project. So we're well below that with Grindline's report. So it's possible that we could do the vegetation, landscape, the replacement of landscape and the irrigation and the fence replacement, all within the current budget, its potential. And we'd like, we were currently waiting for fence quotes. Park and Rec's Commission's recommendation was just to install an additional gate if there are no additional ADA treatments required.
Correct.
City staff still thinks that the whole fence should be replaced and would recommend that we do so. But, but wait until we see what the fence quotes are for replacing the entire perimeter. We've asked for the perimeter fence replacement as well as just the cost to install a new gate.
And also the repair of, I think that was the additional, that was the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee, is just repair the broken pieces that are currently broken. Anyway, I'm looking forward to hearing from Mr. Demchuk. But yeah, certainly, $250,000 would be more than enough. I, I don't think the landscape re-implementing and doing that would approach that. I'd be very surprised. But it'd be nice to fast-track that because I know that, that Grindline is going to try and get this done by October 31st. And I, it'd be lovely if we could do this before winter. And I don't know if we can find a contractor to do the fence and re-implement the original landscape plan.
It would be the perfect time of year to implement some of the plants at this time, October, September, October.
Yeah. And by the way, I mean, just for the public information, is that the original plan had water-sensitive, no, I'm sorry, water-resistant plants, but they do need some watering. So they, they're, they're appropriate for drought situations, but you'd still need to give them some water over time. And unfortunately, we didn't. So that's why they really need some, some help.
Any other initial council comments before I open it to the public? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to the public at this point?
Good evening. Matt Demchuk, 1000 Brown Street. As David insinuated, I'm the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. And so he kind of forced me to get up here and talk, but I was going to talk anyways. We're very excited to have this project go forward. It's kind of been several months in the working. As David said, at our, at our commission meeting, we had a good representation of the skating community as well as some of the stakeholders that originally raised the funds, almost, I think it was a million dollars to build this park. And we've just kind of, the city has failed them and let this thing kind of just fall apart. And so it's very exciting to see the city step up and, you know, kind of fix up what really is one of our jewels in town. I mean, people come here, not just from the local area, they come from all over the state. They even come from around the world to skate this park. So it's very exciting to see this happen. I do want to point out that in the original grid line, there was a proposal, there was about $26,000 to $48,000 to fill in that landscape space and put in some additional tricks and things like that. And it was the Commission's position that this is actually quite a unique park, that we actually have that feature in the middle of our skate park, a, a green area. Well, it's not green right now, but it is set up. It supposedly has watering, it has, you know, the potential to, to maintain that area. And we actually pulled out the original landscaping plans. We had them there at our commission meeting. And we asked the, the city staff to revisit those to see if those are still viable. And so we would like to see that happen. I'm also in favor of the fence. I know the Commission didn't really go for a whole brand-new fence, but personally, I think the, the fence needs to be replaced. My only suggestion or recommendation or request would be that it be a fence that is easily visible through so that, you know, parents, grandparents can sit there and watch their kids skate so they don't have to actually go into the park. Even though, according to Rick Henry, the rocks that are in the center there were designed for people to sit on and watch people skate. But I don't think people do that anymore. Now guys, skaters are actually using those as trick elements. But that's because there's dirt underneath them. If we put grass under, or something underneath them, maybe they won't do that anymore. So I highly recommend that you support this project and that we move forward. And we try to, and I, I recommend that we approve the, the Grindline tonight so that they can get this on the schedule because they've already indicated that they can get this done. And the 10-year anniversary of the skate park is in October. So it's, we're kind of under the gun to try to get this done in that timeframe. So I would recommend that you approve this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Any other thoughts?
No, I'm ready to approve it. I just think it's so great. David, thank for, thank you for your work, Councilmember Knudsen, and the park, and the Chair on this and all of the work. I think it's fantastic, and I'm excited about the green space. If it works, of course, always come back to us. If it doesn't, because I assume that fill-in option, you could always do that later if we can't maintain it. But I think that we can maintain it now. And there was reasons why before with drought tolerant and with the drought going on, why things, we had a policy for not being watered. And now we have a new system in place to be able to take care of it. So I'm very excited about it, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into this.
Ms. Chateau, just for public record, to elaborate, is the sense that the unique element of having actually grass sort of amidst or a green space in the midst of the park made it a sort of a, not a hardcore urban-type park, but more of a rural-type park and allowed parents and others the opportunity to sort of be in the park without actually having to skate. So there was a reason behind that, which the Parks and Rec Commission was happy to re-endorse. So there was no need for additional coverage, was the decision by those guys.
I've been a parent, and I've spent a lot of times inside of that park, watching small kids play in there. So I really appreciate it, and I think that's a wonderful asset because there are a lot of young kids that will use that as well.
And then finally, I just want to give a shout-out to the original folks that raised the money and then brought this forward to the attention of the city manager. I think that, you know, they did a real service to the city originally. And, and also just sort of a special thank you also to the landscaper who still practices in town, and she's done a number of things. And I'm also very happy with her original plan. And, and just the community effort that was put to, to build this thing. And it's nice that the city is rededicating its focus to maintain it.
Okay. So I move?
I just, very quickly, Mary or Paul, any?
The only thing I would add is I'm very happy to see the three-year agreement with the company where they keep coming back. This is what happens to our city assets when we don't maintain them. And, you know, I think over that three-year period, maybe we'll have our own operations, maintenance manual developed so that the park doesn't get into this kind of condition again.
And my thought as well, that, that it's, this is excellent. I think the fact that Grindline built the park, they're familiar with it, they're coming back, they're going to stay on it with the maintenance. So I'm fully in favor of this. And then all. to stay on it with the maintenance. So I'm fully in favor of this. And then also the idea of looking at the fence, you know, parallel track, but pushing this forward. Mr. Doring, any comments before we?
I assume that we have to adjust the resolution to reflect that parts of the Grindline contract will not go forward? Or is that already included in terms of the fill-in part? That's already included in the 124? Adjusted? Okay. Just want to have that clarified. Just from a process point of view, I would only add that it, it's unique and rare that, that the inspector of, of a project also gets to do the building of the project. And I, I think these are unique circumstances because of the skate park, but that's not something that going forward, we should set a precedent on. But I'm in favor of all of this and agree with all the comments that have been made.
That's a good point. Okay, so there's a motion?
I'm ready for that. Okay. So I move that we adopt the resolution approving a professional services agreement with Grindline Skate Park.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Heck, yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
And Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. Thank you for coming out. And we will move now to our next item. We need to take a break? Okay. Yeah? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Sorry, everybody, but for your patience, we'll, we'll be right back.
Walking.
Walking.
Hopefully we won't be shoes.
Didn't even realize.
I had my best shopping trip. We went off the office and I went to the men's section and I got a bunch of shoes. These are men's. I saw seven and they were actually dresses, except for the women. Women, the really clear accessories are gone.
Yeah.
But men don't buy shoes like we do. And they're better quality. They're actually really comfortable.
They look pretty good. Yeah. If they were women's shoes, it'd fall apart.
Yeah, exactly. Immediately. Yeah. This will last me longer than I want them.
Yeah, not too bad. We have no air conditioning at the moment, but it's.
But it's weird. It's been cool. Now it's going to get hot. It's going to get hot.
I think we have maybe about another 10 days before they come and do the work. So, yeah.
Always come to my house in the library.
Yeah, the cooling, the cooling center.
The cooling site.
Yeah. It's not bad. I just open everything at night and close it during the day. But, yeah, I had, you know, kind of a.
Not busy week. Not many people wanting to be. Yeah, I know, it is. So I ramped it all up.
Well, just having five blocks and that actually slow it down, make it a little more functional.
It's hard to finish life because of the, like, the, the, the tent.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. Thank you. Yep. Okie doke. I think we're about ready to get going here. Okay. We're back. And we are going to move on to item number 10.3. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager, manager to execute, enter into, and carry out the terms of a revised 2018 extension of raw water agreement between the City of St. Helena and Spring Mountain Vineyards Incorporated for property located at 2805 Spring Mountain Road, Napa County, California. Mr. Biddle, do I need to read the APN?
No.
Okay.
I'll spare you from that.
I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Biddle, the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in June of 2018, the city council approved a agreement with Spring Mountain Water for a term of five years to provide raw water for purposes of irrigation of the, of the vineyard. The agreement was executed and recorded in, in Napa County records. It's recently come to our attention that the agreement itself, one, was surprised to me, it was recorded, but yet there was no legal description attached to the property. So it's kind of puzzling how it got through their county recorder's office. And as well, the assessor parcel numbers that are actually identified in the agreement, one, don't incorporate all of the APN numbers that are applicable to the Spring Mountain property. Two, it also identifies the parcel that is located within the City of St. Helena as a wrong, a different parcel number. It's actually a, a county parcel number. And then there is also just a, a reference within the body of the agreement to a lease that doesn't exist. So this is really a, a cleanup measure to essentially attach a legal description, identify the correct assessor parcel numbers, remove the reference to lease, and it should be a reference to an agreement. And with that, we are recommending the council's approval of this amendment.
Okay. Is there any initial council question, thoughts? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Do you have, is there any public comments on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. This looks pretty straightforward to me. Mr. Doring, do you have any thoughts?
Only morbid, morbid curiosity. What, what triggered the revelation?
Well, as you know, we've been working pretty closely with Spring Mountain Vineyards on the York Creek Dam and had regular communications with the council for Spring Mountain Vineyards. Diane Kinnabin here. And it was just something that they, I think they, she was looking at in relation to a, there was a billing issue as well relative to the water. And so they were looking at the, the agreement and noticed that and brought it to our attention.
So the recommended action is to adopt the attached resolution. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Yes.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. Okay, that is 10.3. We will move on now to 10.4. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute, enter into, and carry out the terms of a revised loan agreement between the City of St. Helena and Our Town, St. Helena, in an amount not to exceed $450,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the acquisition of property located at 963 Pope Street, St. Helena, California. And this is, again, Mr. Biddle, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At your last council meeting, the, the council approved a loan agreement between the city and Our Town, St. Helena for an amount of $450,000 to assist with the acquisition of property on Pope Street, 963 Pope Street. The agreement, the loan agreement that was approved by the council at the last meeting, provided that the, the city's loan was subordinate to a first loan being provided by RCAC, which is the Rural Community Assistance Corporation. There was a subordination agreement that formalized that priority position. But our loan agreement also provided for an affordable housing agreement. And the loan agreement, as well as the subordination agreement that was approved by the council, provided that the city's affordable housing agreement would be senior in priority to, to all liens. Subsequent to the approval of that item, we got word back from Our Town, St. Helena, that the primary lender, RCAC, was not willing to extend the loan in the event that the city's affordable housing covenant would be in senior position to them. Their concern is that this, the loan that they are providing is really for acquisition. There's no project at this point. And the, I guess the concern is that in the event that Our Town, St. Helena, doesn't perform and there's a default and they have to foreclose, that then the, the value of the property would be, would be depressed because of the existence of the affordable housing agreement that would be in a senior position. Because that agreement, as you'll recall, requires the existing unit to be rented at low income. And then it also provides for affordability restrictions on any future units. So notwithstanding the fact that, of course, the city, in the event there was a default, the city could say, okay, we're willing to, you know, relieve, terminate the, the affordable housing covenant. So it can be, the property could be sold at that point in a, in some proceeding. And therefore, there'd be sufficient funds to, for both parties to recapture their, their money. RCAC isn't willing to proceed at this point. They would like to see that the affordable housing agreement of the city is in fact also subordinated to their, to their loan. So with that in mind, we provided a revised loan agreement for your consideration that amends a Section 11 of that loan agreement to provide that, in fact, the affordable housing agreement would be subordinate to the loan of RCAC, as well as we revised the subordination agreement to make that revision as well for your consideration.
Any comment from council? Initial comment? Okay, I'm going to open it to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mary Stevenson, representing Our Town, St. Helena. First, I want to apologize to bring, have to bring this before you. We should have caught this earlier and it didn't. I gave you a, a one-cheap paper that is in the most simplistic form saying what we're do, what we're asking tonight. What you approved last week had, in order of priority, an affordable restriction on the property, then the RCAC loan, then the city, and then Our Town as the property owner. But we're, what RCAC is requiring of us is that the RCAC loan has first priority, and then the affordability restriction, and then the city loan. We don't think this is a problem because the RCAC is requiring that the existing house be rented at 80% AMI until the rest of the property is entitled. And when the rest of the property is entitled, the whole thing will be, have a long-term affordability restriction on it. So we ask you to make this change so we can proceed with the loan closing next Tuesday.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the council?
I just have a comment. I think, you know, at this late stage of the game, obviously we need to do this. But it brings to my mind the fact that in the future, you know, perhaps we should hopefully have a little more time, but consider being the sole lender. I, when we're talking about money of this, I would call sort of small magnitude compared to some other things we've gotten into. I have no idea how much money we've spent on attorney's fees negotiating these intercreditor agreements. The time that gets spent when there's two lenders, and they are barely senior to us. You know, they're putting in just a little more money than we are. And so it's just, I, I think their concern is unfounded. Of course, if, if there was a default situation, we would probably lift that covenant so fast, you know, to make sure that we would get paid back as well. But I don't think we have much of a choice. But I would just like to keep this in our minds going forward. I think it could be a smoother process, assuming we have the funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment, moving forward. And I'm in favor of making this change.
Any thoughts, Mr. Knudsen? Mr. Doring?
I, I'm in favor of moving forward with this as well. I think Mrs. Coburnstein's comments are, are excellent, that we need to have our process together and looking ahead so we can be proactive when the time comes. And knowing that we, as a city, have the control of, of the affordability, lets me know that, that even making this change, we, we still have control to keep it in the affordable category. So I'm in favor of it. I would entertain a motion for the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the attached resolution.
So moved. I'll second.
And a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Chuteau?
Yes.
Councilmember Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doring?
Yes.
And Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, with that, thank you. And I will adjourn the meeting. I appreciate everybody attending.
No.
That's Claire. She works at Behringer. And, maybe. Yeah, okay. So that's, okay. Good. I mean, I'm glad that they're rotating somebody in. I think, you know, I'm trying to get some of the service clubs to do that, too. Like, show up.
Well, I mean, you, I mean, you're going to have to handle putting your documents in escrow separately. So he's, I'm.